Nine years of smiles, come on.
There you go.
All right, looks like we are live. So, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, April 21st, 6:30 PM. All selectmen are present. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Water Selectment will be via remote participation for the greatest expense possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough's website, www.southbrowntown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner, by finding the meeting at www.southbrowntown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. First appointment tonight is Brian Valentine, Finance Director, with an update on the fiscal year 2021 budget. Mr. Valentine, good evening.
How are you? Good evening. Good evening to all. So, let me start by saying, I don't want to present this as a final budget, obviously a final budget discussion. This is just an update on that we are well aware of the situation affecting our FY21 budget, and you know, we're going to have some loss of revenues for the town. We don't know the full extent of that yet. Local aid, you know, normal, we've, in other sort of financial crises, we've sort of had an idea of the parameters of it, and I think you've heard a lot that we don't know the parameter, you know, parameters of this one. So, we got a little ways to go to kind of figure out how deep this is going to affect us financially. We did update the budget as you saw in your packet, and we basically took our revenues down about $300,000. Those revenues, they're not voted at town meeting, they're voted at the recap when we do the tax rate recap. So, things such as local aid and local receipts, we set those technically about when we do the tax rate recap. We estimate them at this time of year. Typically, they're very close to where they're going to end up to be. However, this year, not so, or might be so if we're lucky. The numbers that you have in front of you now are probably conservative. If anything, I would think they may go down a little bit, unfortunately. I'm hoping not, but I can't guarantee it. We just don't have that information. So, the good thing is, if there's anything good, is the, we had some positive budget adjustments as far as, as far as, since the last budget recap was done. So, at the last official budget, we still had the library renovations in for $100,000, so that's gone. We had two students going to Norfolk. That is down to one, which is about $40,000. My position, as you know, in my department, I retracted for at least a year, see where that goes. So, so we had about $300,000 that came off our revenue side, and we had about $184,000 that came back on in a positive manner in the expense side. So, it was, the effect was blunted a little bit. However, we did lose about $135,000 in the most current projected budget. So, that brings the estimated tax rate increase up to about 3.43%, if I'm right. So, that's, that's pretty much the summary on the revenues and expenses. You know, the big takeaway, I think, is that this is like a stepping stone, and once we hear more from the state side, the governor's side, and what the state's going to do, I think, I think we'll have a better idea. As you know, I did put a slide in there regarding our reserves. So, unfortunately, although this isn't the time to really talk about that, usually it's in the good days that you talk about that. The state is sort of crowing about their stabilization fund. If you listen to them closely, they're happy that they have a large reserve fund to help them, and it is good. That's going to help the state a lot to get through this. I have a feeling they'll be drawing down on that. We, unfortunately, never built ours up as much as I think we should have. So, we only have that $500,000 stabilization fund that's available, and you know, we can draw down on that, but it would have been nice to have like a million in there and be able to pass that over the next few years. So, that's a thought for the future that I know I have, and I think the town administrator has to discuss in the future. So, the budget that we have at 3.4% still has all the positions we talked about in it, except mine, and I think it has all the, you know, all the same services that we went through. We're still planning on splitting up the capital for some in the spring and some in the fall, and we look forward to the Capitol Committee kind of going through that and making some opinions, and if there's maybe some items we can talk through and agree to postpone, we could do that, so that might help. I think one of the main things tonight, I won't belabor going through too much more, but the, but the main thing tonight is for the board to sort of let us know if that's acceptable, what the budget is right now. Is 3.4% acceptable now that we know what is happening out there? I don't know, but we'd kind of like the board to let us know if they want to have some scenarios thrown out there, if they want to have some, you know, some what-ifs. If we, you know, if we put a cap of 2% on a tax rate, what would that look like? What would we have to do? Or should we be advising departments to cut from their budgets, you know, a percent or anything like that? There's a number of ways you can approach these things. They're not pleasant, but, but sometimes you have to go through the exercises. So, so that's kind of one of the main things we were hoping the board could, could give some feedback on tonight, is where do you want to go from here? Knowing that things may get worse, and I'm hoping they don't, but they, you know, there's a good chance they may get a little worse, and, and give us some direction as far as what, you know, what each of you would like to see us do to give you some more information if you think that we need to, you know, amend this budget further. The one other thing is, is even with town meeting in June, that's still actually not that far away. We know it's, what, six weeks, seven weeks? So, we probably need some information sooner rather than later, so we can have the departments, if necessary, we can have the departments do some work. I do think, just as an aside, we'll finish FY20. Okay, we are in FY20. If there's any other silver lining, it's that this happened in the last quarter of the year, the fiscal year. So, the effect this year is very limited. There'll be some effect, but it won't be horrendous. The main, the main fallout from all this is going to certainly be in FY21 and FY22, and as long as it takes the two to three, four years to get back on track to a normal economy. But, so that's, that's pretty much the highlights of what I wanted to go through, and, and if the board has any comments or any feedback, we'd be, we'd be happy to hear it.
Yep, so just one point that I'll make to start, and you had mentioned town meeting in June. For all those listening, theoretically, we're still May right now. It's still the date that the town moderator had set for the middle of May, that Saturday. Obviously, that has the potential to be revisited within the 30-day timeframe, but, and I wouldn't be surprised if we do get pushed back to June or even later, but there has not been an official decision to go past that mid-May date that the moderator has selected. And Brian, one last point, but a question I had. I know we had spent a decent amount of time talking months ago when we were back in our normal times, looking at the five-year projection as well, and the impact that we would have on our levy capacity, looking those number of years out ahead. And our packet did include that same projection as well, and I'm just curious, did you assume in those projections a return, a return to normal times at one, at some point, or does that?
Yeah, we did assume, or I assumed, a very slow return to normal times in the outer years of building some, you know, local aid coming back to a positive rather than being flat or a negative. And local receipts, same thing, instead of being flat or negative, sort of starting the slow climb up. So, yes, the, we did, we did assume that. I think it's going to be, like I said, in five years, I think it's going to be a slow, a very slow hill, but let's hope not. Let's hope it takes off faster than we think.
Thank you. Others with questions, comments?
I've got a question.
Or, go ahead, Sam.
Brian, I've also been following what the state is doing, and they seem to be a real moving target at this point. If we, if we, let's say, hold off on any firm decision for another few weeks, do you think it's likely the state is going to have any new information that's useful? Or is it essentially, we know what we're going to know at this point, and if there is a town meeting late June, then there's real pressure to finalize whatever we think is the right answer in terms of the budget proposal for that meeting to consider?
Yeah, I don't, that's a very good question, and I guess it falls into a little bit of the unknown, one of the unknowns. I would think the state is well aware that most, well, all communities in Massachusetts are at that time of year where they're setting their budget, budgets. So, they've got a lot of pressure from 350 communities to sort of get some information, but at the same time, from their point of view, they are doing the same thing we're doing, is sort of, they need to know, like, the sales tax, how, how big a hit is that? I mean, in all those revenues that they get, how exactly much are they losing? And I'm not sure they have enough time yet to determine that, and since we're still in it, that complicates it again.
They've not given you any signal in terms of timing that we're going to have more information in two weeks or four weeks or whatever.
No, no, it's been very open-ended. Like I said, I do think there'll be some feedback in the next four to six weeks, again, because they know, you know, by June 30th, most communities like to have their budgets done in town meeting. So, unfortunately, it's going to be all last second. I hate to say that.
Okay, I guess I would comment, Brian, that we had, we spent obviously a lot of time working through the details of the current proposed FY21 budget, and, you know, I guess I feel pretty strongly that we've got a good package there, and I would be loath to get in there and cut substantially in it at this point, even with the economic uncertainty here. But I'd be interested if Brian and Mark had any other suggestions for us to look at in terms of if we had to, to cut back, you know, at least moderately, in terms of the overall number, to get back down to 3% or 2.5% or something like that tax rise. What kind of things could we do with relatively less pain at this point? What are the options? Capital stuff is interesting in terms of deferring that, but that comes at a cost as well. So, I'd be interested in your thoughts in terms of what our choices might be for something like that.
Brian and Mark, before you, before you answer that, following up on it, when we were considering the budget the first time through, you worked through some different scenarios, and those scenarios included, you know, not adding new positions, keeping the, the, the tax rate to a lower number and everything. It, would it be possible for you to simply plug the assumptions that you've got for the, for the, the existing budget that we talked about, and plug them into the previous scenarios that you did? Because those were, those were at reduced staffing levels, those were at reduced tax increase levels, instead of, instead of creating, you know, an additional wheel, just work off what we had done previously. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think it, I think it makes sense. In fact, when Sam was talking, all I could think, I was having flashbacks, Marty, too, when you had asked us to make, you know, the five-year projection, you want to see no red numbers, right? So, we came back and showed you how that could be done, and by using fiscal discipline to maintain that over the next five or six years. I, I think, I don't know, I'd have to get a little more information as to what you're looking to do, but yes, I, I think that we could do something like that. It may be easier if the board would have set a target. Do you want to go back to the tax increase that we had, that we were going to have, you know, before this all hit? And we can try to figure out how to work to that number and what that would do. You've got to remember, Brian, and maybe he didn't articulate this, but this 3.43 number that he has in for a tax increase includes everything for the spring, and also includes the anticipated capital for the fall meeting as well. So, that number may seem a little bigger than you may have remembered it when we talked about the spring town meeting.
Mark, I think, my view is, I think that makes sense, but it's impossible for me to know, I mean, I think it's impossible for any of us to know what the Town of South bros, what their situation is going to be when we have a town meeting, and I think we at least have to be ready, even if, even if it doesn't, even if it's not where we come down at the end of the day, I think we have to be ready to explain to people that, that yes, there is a way to have really a zero tax increase this year, but this is what it would entail. I mean, honestly, I think we owe people that, because, jeez, I mean, it's entirely possible. I don't know, but it's entirely possible that we end up at town meeting and, and we have a sizable number of people saying, "I can't bear a tax increase this year." If, if any year, we're going to try to come up with a way to, to, to level fund the town, this might be it. I think we would at least owe the taxpayers the ability to say, "Yes, we could level fund and not have a tax increase at all, but this is what it would mean." I really think we're obligated to be able to tell them that.
And I, and I don't disagree with you. I think, like I said, but I think that, you know, for, for Brian and I to kind of effectively do this and work with the departments to do this, we kind of need benchmarks. A zero tax increase is a great benchmark. You know, we can, we can work from that and figure out, because you can equate that to dollars, and now we know what we need to cut and, and work with the departments to figure out how that would work. I think there's probably got to be, you know, maybe a middle-of-the-road approach. So, if the board came up with and said, "Okay, so if we're to 3, 4, or 3, we'd like to see, you know, you know, a 2.5, you know, a 0, and, you know, you know, maybe something else," you know, and just give us some parameters, and then we can give, you know, the, give the department some of those parameters as well. I, I was having this conversation with Brian earlier, that I think a lot of the issues that are going to be decided at town meeting are going to be driven as much by emotion as they are by facts. And I, I think, you know, you make a good point, Marty, is that we're going to need to be prepared to, to respond to those issues. Some of those things that we may suggest are going to take some ramp-up time to try to do, which, you know, we may not have the time to do that, you know, in six or seven weeks.
Yeah. Again, I'll, I'll stop talking now about this, but, but again, it, I feel very strongly that we, that, that I don't think at the end of the day, I'm going to be in favor of a budget that has a zero tax increase, but I'm going to wait to hear from the taxpayers at town meeting as well. But I think we owe it to folks to be able to explain that, yes, there is a way to do it. This is what the budget would look like in terms of the services and the, and the reduction in services that, that the town would have to absorb in order to do that. So, I'll, I'll, I'll put on mute now and let other folks wait.
Okay.
Mark, Marty, I don't, and, and Sam's question still may not have been answered, yes, but which, but I, I, I think what Marty's suggesting makes very good sense for us to do in conjunction with advisory and others. What I want to be mindful of, though, is not presenting something to town meeting, giving them all these options, saying, "I, I don't want to present something that is reckless, that is actually going to hurt the town." We all know that an incredibly small number of people come to town meeting. That's what it is, though. That's okay. That, that's, that's something that we have. We are going to have it, we, we could have an even smaller number this year attend, and who are going to set the parameters, set the budget for all 11,000 people in our town. If we present options of, "Here you go," I think that people, that, that small group may very well choose that, and, and that could be reckless. So, while I think it's a great idea to do the analysis and to have that available, so that if someone makes an amendment at town meeting and says, "I propose that this budget be reduced to blank," we have that information available for everyone else as to what that would be. If we actually put that up there as an option, and, all right, town meeting, select what you think, select what you want. You know, I'm afraid that that could be incredibly reckless for the other 10,000 residents in town. That's my only fear.
Can I follow up, Marty, to your point? I think another benchmark we have that could be interesting is that you'd raised the, the comment earlier about the levy limit going forward, no red ink. And I think we're actually not far from that now in terms of what Brian Valentine just presented. I'd be interested in seeing what a budget might look like to actually keep us in the black ink on the levy limit out there. I think there are two years now that are a little bit underwater. So, are there things that we might think about doing now that would keep us on the positive side of that going forward? And what would your recommendations be for that as an option for us to think about?
Also, if I can add, Brian, I, I also agree, Marty, that we should look at the options. I think we should leave that door open depending on how the options come back. I also agree, it's up to the taxpayers at the end of the day, but I also understand where Dan's coming from. So, I'd be interested in, in looking at the options at a zero or even a two versus a two and a half. I mean, whatever the board thinks is best, and then, and then making a decision. And I think by having it presented at a selectmen's meeting, I think the opportunity for the citizens to see, and have an opportunity to see what they want, is definitely, for me, you know, the best way to go. And I, Brian, I have a couple other questions whenever the discussion.
Yep, go ahead, you're up.
So, Mark and Brian, what is the actual number? If you take the capital out, what is the percentage? Is it like 1.8 or what percentage of the 3.43 is capital?
If you take the fall, the spring, it depends how you're asking, the fall capital?
Yes, just the fall capital.
Yeah, so that would be another little over a percent and a half, maybe, so.
Okay, so.
Say 1.25%, something around there.
So, that 1.25% is included in the 3.43 at this point, or no?
Right, right.
It is. Okay, so you could come down depending on what the Capitol Committee says. Okay, 1.25 roughly. Also, Brian, do you have any idea on what the transfers, the end of year transfers or shortfalls are going to be? I know fire's going to have one. I mean, do we have any idea what we could potentially be looking at having to fund as well, because I think that plays into this budget?
Well, thankfully, we had a good year snow wise, which is usually our transfer. However, I'm aware of one in Building Department, which isn't too, too large, and the Fire Department is going to have some type of transfer. But unfortunately, we only have, we do have about 90,000, I think it's about 95,000 in the reserve fund right now. So, minus, you know, minus Building Department, minus Fire Department, it's not going to leave a whole lot left. That gives you the option of transferring between departments at the end of the year, so it's, we do have one more option to do that. But the good news is, I, I haven't heard any other departments that are in trouble. So, I think right now, knock on wood, those are the only two. I don't know how the Health Department is doing also. I, I, they did get some funding already to offset some costs, and they're going to obviously get some more, but I don't know if it's going to cover them. So, they may, they may be another, they may be a third cost center that we're going to have to deal with at the end of the year.
One other, sorry, one other piece just to keep in mind is town meeting is going to have some additional expense similar to what we did when we, when town, when Main Street got voted, or the Public Safety Facility. We'll need to bring in additional company, the same company, to link the three rooms together with the technology to be able to, to run the town meeting in three different locations within the building. So, and, and obviously, I think there, you know, may be some additional costs for masks and hand sanitizer and any other, anything else we need to do to make people comfortable for, you know, the, the three, four hours that we're going to need to, to get through, what we need to get through.
So, that brings me to my other point. Go ahead, Brian.
No, you go first, Lisa, sorry.
Just, just quickly, what are we, do we have any idea of what we're going to be able to reimburse through FEMA for this fiscal year? Because obviously, we don't know what's going, what's going to happen going ahead, but.
I, I really think it's, it's, it's a, it's an unknown. It's, it's a lot of promises at this point, and, you know, I, I'm hoping it's not going to be like the first small business loan, you know? If you get in in the first 11 days, you did great, but otherwise, it's, it's all, it's all downhill. So, I know that Chief Achilles sent out, there's, MEMA is holding a webinar tomorrow that a couple people will be attending on reimbursements. You know, I know that Heidi Krieger, the town accountant, has been very vigilant, making sure that departments are keeping track of these things. And so, when this is quote-unquote "over" and the state of emergency is lifted, we're going to be ready to submit our reimbursements, and, and because we're going to have all of our information together. So, I think it's, I, I think it's going to be a timing thing, but Lisa, I really don't, I really can't say for it with any certainty.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, so Mark, one thing that you had mentioned about town meeting and the added costs for the technology for the multiple rooms. While I think it's preferable to have a town meeting before June 30th, legislation currently in place allows us to go beyond that, if, you know, conditions, you know, dictate that. Is that then going to put the cost of the town meeting into the FY21 budget as well? Another further drain on, on those resources?
Yes, I, I, you know, obviously, we'll have to pay for them where it's incurred. You know, I would let Brian speak to how much he wants to operate under a 1/12 budget.
And, and there's all sorts of ramifications. I get it, I get it. I think, again, led with, it's preferable to have it by June 30th, but.
Yes.
Who knows exactly how things are going to be, so.
Yeah, so obviously, where your expense is incurred is where it needs to be paid from. So, if it's in July, it's an FY21 expense.
Then theoretically, a carryover of those savings from this year's budget, whatever that.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, I think the goal, I think the goal is to try to carry as much money over from fiscal '20 into '21 as we can. You know, the, the, the financial summit that the, the Senate Ways and Means, House of Senate Ways and Means had at the state level, I think it was last week, and talked about where they think the state is going to be after this was pretty depressing. You know, they don't see us being back to any sense of normalcy with the economy until the first or second quarter of calendar '22. And so, you know, I think we need to be careful with '21, and we need to not have great expectations for fiscal '22, you know, either. So, that's, you know, whatever expenses we can take care of within fiscal '20, I think we should, at the same time, trying to make sure that we bring forward as much money, you know, closing out to free cash at the end of the year.
Yeah, and the directive to departments is to tight-lid still on spending for the rest of the year, only essentials, correct? To put us in a position where we can carry over as much as possible, so.
Yes, and, and that's what, that's what the directive is, and that's what it's going to continue to be, and, and I'm not sure there's been any jailbreaks yet, so we should be, we should be good.
Good. Other questions, comments from board members?
I guess I would suggest, sorry to interrupt, so I guess I would suggest, and, and the town administrator can disagree with me if he thinks so, but I would suggest, based on what I'm hearing, is maybe a 0%, 2.5%, and 1/3, a scenario, a third scenario towards Sam's comment about a scenario that just eliminates those deficits in the five-year plan. So, it would basically be three scenarios, and we can at least see what they, what they look like, and, you know.
So, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with the Finance Director, but, you know, he obviously knows that if you do want to. But, you know, he obviously knows that if you do want a zero or you're doing, I think Ms. Braccio had asked for a two. So if you do a zero, two, but a zero and a two are going to wipe out. So you know what, that's going to get, that's going to get back to Marty's original, I want to see all black. Five years. So. I, I think that if we come back with those two proposals, people will get an idea of, of exactly what we're looking at. So. But that, that's the kind of direction I think we're looking at, you know, we're looking to try to get tonight. It's a short window and. So we're going to just try to pull it all together.
All right. Any other board members with questions? I do notice that Ms. Cook has her hand up. And I am. I'm going to go to her. Kathy, you're on mute. Can you hear us though?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep, a little closer to the microphone though.
Okay, is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
So it's nice to see everybody. So I listened to everything as I just, so I'm basically responding to a few things that got said. Advisory does not have a meeting tonight, so this is just for me. As far as whether to do multiple budgets, I believe advisory will probably support doing a, at least two. We could support the three, two, but I definitely want to see one that is with a 0% tax increase like Mr. Healy said. Kind of took the words out of my mouth. I also want to wait though to see what happens as far as real estate tax receipts that have been postponed to June 1st. I think from that, if we can take a look at what the delinquency rate is. After June 1st passes, that's going to probably inform us as to how much trouble people are having as a whole. I know that there are more people using the food bank than have in the past. That's one metric I think we can look at. So I do think that. Showing the town what a 0% increase would be. Would be appropriate, but I hear what Mr. Kalinda's saying. We've already got an unrepresentative meeting and it would be probably even more so. So I hear that as a pretty big caveat. I wanted to just clarify what the advisory differences are with the budget that we had before this. Mr. Valentine had said in the budget package, there was one. There were three. We're now down to two because of the withdrawal of the part-time treasurer position. But the big one continues to be the EDC budget. That's one that will, that is a difference and that probably will change. The other one, we just haven't voted completely on the youth and family services addition. I think it's going to be supportive, but there is quite a bit of difference. On advisory as far as acquisition goes, but I do think that if we can just get all seven people there, it will probably be supported, but it may be 4-3. As far as the comment that was made by Mr. Valentine a few months ago about stabilization. To me, that's a long discussion. Mr. Healy was part of advisory the last time this really was discussed in great detail. John Butler authored a white paper that I'd love for people to reread again before we make that decision as far as that should go up again. This was a real heated debate many years ago and. Debate came down on the side of orient to something that would support just a few months of emergency money. So I want to make sure that that one's not given short threat. We really should look at that very closely. To make sure that we have either changed our mind as far as philosophy or we haven't. The reserve fund transfers, nothing I've heard tonight, sounds like a reserve fund transfer to me, other than the COVID related stuff, ATM. Et cetera. So I'm hoping there are other ways to solve the ones that I believe are on Brian and Mark's list as far as reserve fund transfers. One group, so Chelsea and I had a. Phone call with Brian and Mark this week about budget things. So one group that of course is the biggest part of our budget is the schools. I don't think they've had a chance to weigh in on anything that might change as far as their budget goes for fiscal year 21. And I don't know that there is, but there might be. So we certainly should make sure we give them a chance to look at their budget to see if there's anything that would change. Advisory definitely supports the instructions to the departments to basically be very careful about what you spend. Now, of course, what doesn't get spent this year is not going to help us for fiscal year 21. It's going to be fiscal year 22. It's going to be part of free cash, but. We still need it for that year too, so that's good. So I think that's it. I just want to make sure that. You guys knew where advisory stood. We definitely are pretty much on the same page, other than EDC as far as the O budget goes. Don't know who will end up as far as the new budget though.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Valentine? Brian, thank you for joining us. All right, next item on the agenda is reports. I will start with a chair report. First thing I just wanted to note was that since we last met, I have participated in two. Telephone calls, conference calls with the trustees at Chestnut Hill Farm. And the last one that we had, the most recent one was just this morning. Melissa Danza, conservation, has been part of those calls as well as has been Mark. And this morning, at the end of it, we were able to agree. And I just want to point out that the trustees have been very, very cooperative in these phone calls that we've had. They've been very, very positive meetings. And I think we've made headway to the point that we're going to be looking at having. The trails at Chestnut Hill Farm open and available for town residents to use by the end of this week. Looking at having them ready for Friday. You know, I think the trustees made some very good points about concerns that they have for safety and particularly with the. The active farmland and the people there and the animals themselves. So, you know, they took the action that they did, but they've been very, very responsive in the two phone calls that we've had with them. A couple of key points, they will not be ready until Friday at the earliest because there is some signage. And some additional fencing in areas that they want to rope off to prevent public from, from going on to. One of the things that we need to make very, very clear to people is that parking. For the use of the field, of the trails rather, is limited to the parking lot at the, at the trail. And there will be no parking on Chestnut Hill Farm Road. We'll have signage up prohibiting that. They have experienced, the, the most problems they've experienced has been parking related at other facilities that they have opened up. And there's just been so many people that want to use those areas. Lot gets full and people just park all over the streets wherever they can. And we really need to limit that parking at that area to the, to the lot itself. Melissa has done an excellent job reaching out to organize volunteers who will be out on the trails. To help, you know, enforce, you know, the areas where there will be signage and, you know, keeping people away from the active farmland. So there, there will be a volunteer effort associated with this as well. Mark and I have talked with Chief Paulus. About this and he's going to have his officers on duty during the day incorporate in their patrols, stopping by the area. Just to make sure that the parking isn't a problem as well, but. Seems that by Friday, you know, we're on a path to have the, the trails at the Chestnut Hill Farm opened again for, for residents' use. So that's a, I think a good recreational area that, that will be available. Obviously. All the guidelines that are in place remain from the governor's executive orders, but. That's. That we've made excellent progress with. I'm happy to report that.
That's great news, Brian. Well done to everybody.
Yep. And again, I want to thank the trustees as well because they've been, they've been excellent through this process, very, very cooperative. I just would encourage everybody in town to continue to follow the governor's guidelines. Obviously the news earlier today. Closure of schools will continue through the end of this academic year, so the homeschooling will continue. And I fully expect that the, either later on this week or some part of next week. He'll revisit the, the May 4th date that he has and will be following that. Our next meeting is May 5th. Certainly by then the governor will have issued an update on his executive orders. I do plan, just so everybody knows. You know, we talked at our last meeting about having Mr. Semino back at the meeting on the 5th to have continued discussions. On a date for the annual town meeting. I've also reached out to the town clerk and anticipate that Jim is going to be ready to. Have recommendations for us on the process that he would be looking to implement for the town election. And looking to talk about setting a date for that as well, so. So it looks like those will be on our agenda anyways for the next meeting on May 5th. And. That is all I had. Who's next? Is it members or you? Members reports, anybody with?
I raised my hand, I know. I feel like I'm in school again. Just a couple of quick things. I, I, there's some amazing things going on in town right now. Our citizens have truly stepped up to the plate. They're looking out for each other in, in so many different ways, not just for masks or. But they're doing it spiritually as well, you know. Neri School did a thing where they were painting rocks and they were leaving inspirational rocks around town on some of the trails. And I know so many people have appreciated that. There's a, a ton of citizens in the town that are making masks for. First responders as well as for, for citizens. So we can all go out and we can all be safe. So a huge thank you to them as well. I'd like to also, just from the board, I'd like to thank all of the people that live in town that are on the front lines. That, you know, are going out to work every day, making sure that we can go to the grocery store, that our mail is delivered. That, you know, our first responders are able to go out, our, our nurses, nurse practitioners, I mean, e- everyone along those lines. I'd like to thank them. And lastly, I would just like to remind everybody to continue to support the small businesses. This is such an important time as far as their future goes. On when they do reopen, you know, if they can successfully do that. So that is very important. And also just a reminder to please continue to support the food pantry. There's a greater need now than there's ever been. I know people have truly stepped up to the plate, but just a reminder that if we could all. You know, just do that, just to look out for everyone as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Yeah, Brian, following on what Lisa just said about the small businesses. That was one of the questions we asked Representative. Dykma and Senator Eldridge when, when they were here. To be wary of the money that's being avail, made available through the Federal Cares Act for small businesses. Slipping through cracks and the, and the state be available to, to, to jump in. Just before we get on tonight, before our meeting, the, the, the additional funding on the federal side passed. And the Secretary of the Treasury, one of the points that he made is that a big focus of this, this additional. I think it's $310 billion is for businesses with 10 or fewer employees. And I had a couple of conversations with folks from the EDC this week, and I know they've reached out to the businesses in town. And I think Mark, you told me it's, it's available on the website, the town website for what the process is for businesses to. Apply, attempt to access the, the money that's available. And what the EDC folks told me is that they're going to be reaching out to the businesses, particularly the small businesses in town. For any assistance they might need, because again, a, a medium-sized business, a large business, they have accountants, they have lawyers. Either on staff or that they contract with regularly. It's a much more difficult thing for a business that employs two, four, six people. And so A, I encourage number one, the money's been made available and, and, and at least the representations from the federal government are that they're really targeting. The smaller businesses and to tap into our town website. And also be aware that the EDC is, is an available resource to help these truly small businesses. Apply for and hopefully get some relief from the, from the federal loan program. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Others?
Couple of quick things. One. I think that I've been following for my business activity as well, the track of COVID cases in Massachusetts and Southborough as well. And I think there's some data that says things are actually starting to slow down, that social distancing is working. And I think it's worthwhile thinking ahead a little bit to try to figure out when the governor relaxes the constraints for the state. And things start back up again, I'd be interested in understanding better, what kind of things should we be thinking about in terms of either additional or different requirements for Southborough? Not only for town employees, but others, are there things that we ought to consider there? So maybe if Mark could. Begin putting that on the table for consideration to figure out that we just don't miss any opportunities there to help. Make that restart process work as smoothly as possible. I, for example, heard that one of the big factors some people feel are the closing of the schools. That helped that process and clearly we're going to be working with that now through the summer months into the fall here. So is there enough there that actually keep us safer relatively or should we think about doing a lot of other things? So. I'd be interested in sort of understanding how we can maybe get a little ahead of that if possible. Second, I'm hearing from people about a couple of things. One is in terms of the meetings that are happening via Zoom. People were grateful that the opportunity is there to participate via Zoom and keep some things working. But I think that there needs to be continued focus on allowing public participation in that. I've heard people. Complain that, you know, I don't have the technology to get in there and do that or whatever. Sometimes I sign on and I can't. Have an opportunity to comment. So I think that Tom is doing a great job, but to keep the focus on doing meetings that have people have an opportunity to comment, I think is. Is very important. And the other thing that I continue to hear is, is I raised it last time, transfer station hours. I and others have observed that the transfer station sometimes is not. Place where there's a lot of social distancing going on. I think people try to do that, but I've seen numbers of circumstances where people are congregating more than. But it's probably an ideal set of circumstances. And it's been suggested several times that more hours might spread out the demand some, and I know Karen expressed concerns about that in the past. But it seems to me that's something that's worth continuing to consider, at least trying to figure out if there, there's a way we could do that. To make it easier for people to do the social distancing. So that's it for me.
So Brian, I'll, Brian, if I may, I know you're on mute, Brian. Do you want to say something first?
Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, thank you, Brian. So, you know, I'll piggyback a little bit on what Sam said as well as what Lisa said. So. I've known, I, I've seen, I've been to the transfer station a number of times over the last number of weeks and. And I've noticed actually a good amount of physical distancing. I've actually seen people wait, maybe one of them. Wait to go to your station in the recycling area. Maybe Sam, you've seen something different. I've actually seen people wait curbside and then go up. I thought that's been outstanding. There's been signs up by DPW encouraging people to do that. So I think that's, that's been good. You know, as Sam said, the more we can encourage people to, to do that, the better. In, in terms of what Lisa is saying, we absolutely do, you know, let's, let's support our local businesses with takeout, et cetera. Let's also thank our teachers for doing what they do on behalf of our kids. Teaching remotely is not an easy thing. And, you know, I encourage our students to, who are appreciative of what their teachers do. Or that, that our parents and students, you know, thank a teacher. And, and an appreciation for what they're doing during these difficult times. And then clearly our first responders, you know, police and fire put themselves on the line every day. There's not a call that won't be answered and, you know, they are ready to help everyone and put themselves at, at risk every day. And, and you know what? I, I can't thank them enough for what they do. I think the town is, I've seen a lot of the kids do some neat things with celebrating birthdays and whatnot and doing. Drive-bys of houses and signs. I think it's beautiful. I know that when Easter was celebrated a couple of weekends ago. You know, there were hundreds of cars that lined up at Finn and paraded past St. Matthews. And waving to Father Flynn, who thousands of people have gotten to know and love and respect in Southborough. And it was a, actually a beautiful sight. So I think the town is doing a lot of great things. And with encouragement from our leaders, I think, you know, we'll see that continue. So. Brian, back to you.
All right. No, thanks. And actually, one of the things that I was starting to talk about before I was smart enough to take myself off mute was. I was just curious what others' experience has been at the transfer station because I know. I was just curious what others' experience has been at the transfer station because I know. And, you know, and I have no reason to disbelieve the stories that are being told about instances where it is crowded there. The times that I've gone. I've, Dan, I think I've experienced more of what you've seen than, than the, what, uh, Sam was referencing. Um. And I go two days a week, uh, typically Wednesday, late in, in the afternoon and also Saturday, you know, like noon, one o'clock or so. In the times that I go. There's very, very few other cars there if possible. I personally. I think that we're open enough, uh, we're open enough hours. And I think that if people are finding. Times that they're going, and I think Saturday afternoon late is always going to be a busy time at the transfer station. And if that's a time where. We run into instances where. It is crowded there. I think we need to start thinking about, you know, having people spread out the times that they, that they utilize that facility. Um, you know, you know, before this whole thing started, I would always try and avoid it late on a Saturday, just because it was so crowded there. Uh, I hope that people are taking the opportunity to, to spread their use of the facility out. As, on their own as well. So I don't, I'm just curious if others, what others experiences are.
And, and Brian, I'm not suggesting that everybody is not social distancing. I certainly see people making this concerted effort to do that. Yeah, but there are also instances I've seen where you do get groups that are congregating more than they should. And so. You don't need much of that to, uh, take away the advantage of social distancing. So. Help as we can.
Well, Brian, I can share that, you know, Matt goes to the dump for us and he has commented many times, uh, over the last couple of weeks that. Kind of similar to what Dan and yourself are saying. Um, unfortunately, there's always going to be, I think, those people that aren't social distancing. We're seeing that around town now. I mean. Everyone has a belief in, in what's the safest thing to do for themselves and their family. And I think the same applies at the transfer station, but. Overall, I've heard very few, uh, complaints about that not happening. Um, so. Um, kind of our experience is the same as, as yourself and Dan.
And, and I, I will add that mine is similar to that as well. In fact, it's, it's, I was there Saturday afternoon pretty late. Um, and it was busier than the times earlier in the week that I went, but it's kind of funny because. Um, you know, people act on muscle memory. And so you pull up to the recycling area, you get out of your car and you. You walk the way you normally do. And I see people, and I, I was one of them, who catch themselves and realize, nope, I've got to do things differently today. So I, I, I don't, and again, I've gone on some Wednesdays and Thursdays and there's nobody there. So there's, there's more than enough hours where the transfer station is almost deserted. Um, that if people really feel the need to, to avoid social distancing, they can go. Uh, but again, even on a Saturday afternoon this past week, um, uh. Pretty much every, not pretty much, everybody I saw was trying to do the right thing. Again, sometimes muscle memory, you get out, you move quickly, but people were catching themselves and, uh, um, and doing the right thing. So I don't. I don't think there is a justification for increasing transfer station hours.
And Marty, I'll just share, I mean, we're social beings. So even the term social distancing has a lot of people off there. You know, I've, I've, I've heard the u- the use of the term physical distancing to really get, drive that concept home of physically. Separating, we're social beings. We want to interact with others, our neighbors, et cetera. And so. You know, I, I, I think there's a, you know, a, a human inclination to, to, to maybe less social distance. Uh, but hopefully more physical distance. Um, a term that I've been trying to use more because again, I want people to be social. But be mindful of the distance that you need to have. Uh, you know, to, to, to someone else to, not only for your own personal safety. You know, but clearly we got to be mindful of the safety of others.
Good point. Uh, all right, Mr. Purple, administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of issues tonight. Um, one, um, to kind of what we were talking about with social distancing. So the board recalls that. Um, we, uh, recreation had, um, uh, well, there was a request from this board to open up the track at Trotty. For walkers and, um, you know, the school had agreed to that and everything seemed to be going well. Um, but, uh, over the weekend, um, we had an issue at the track. There was, um, a, a large group of people. Um, there were people playing on the infield. There were people, uh, small children who were using the, the sand pit, uh, for, for pole vaulting. Um, as a sandbox. So, um, the police had to come and kind of, uh, move people out and, um. In response to that, Recreation has, um, DPW covering the sand pit. So that is no longer an attractive nuisance. Plus they're putting up additional signs in the infield just to. Ensure there's no group activities and social distancing is maintained. Hopefully that's going to take care of it. Um, so I, I just want to commend, um, Tim Davis for, for jumping in and trying to. Solve, um, solve the issues and keep the track open. I know that there are people that appreciate it and people that are using it. So. Um, uh, so that is, you know, a step in the right direction. Um, also as a walking option, um, I was in touch with Bill Harrison, the management company for the golf course. And, uh, Mr. Harrison said that, you know, he does not have any issues if people who want to walk the golf course. Um, while it is closed. Um, and, and so that is an option that is open to people if they, if they, uh, do want to walk the course. Um, it is available, um, probably should stay away from the tee boxes and the greens. Um, and stick to the fairways and, um, and that would be, uh, most appreciated. So that is another option.
And no clubs allowed.
And no clubs allowed, please.
Uh, Mark, very, very quickly on that, that's great. That's great. That's, that's great news. Um, but, but, um, since I do walk over near Woodward an awful lot, there are si- there, at least there is a sign right near the, um. Uh, the entrance to the golf course that says that it is, uh, closed, no trespassing. So we probably need to get rid of that.
Well, but so the parking lot isn't going to be open, um, because I think that that makes it then an attractive nuisance and it's easier to. Park, bring your car in and park and maybe take something out of your, you know, trunk to, you know, go and, and hit the little white ball, but, um. So the parking lot won't be open, but we'll take a look at that signage and, and, uh, you know, put something up that maybe, you know, the club has closed, you know, walkers only. Or something.
That's, that's, that's terrific that the golf course is going to be open for, for, uh, people to get some exercise.
As long as people don't interpret walkers only as that means I can't take a cart. So, you know, we'll have to, we'll figure out the, we'll figure out the wording to get that, to get that properly. Uh, and then the, the only other piece that I have, um, which again is good news, uh, Mrs. Hale and I participated in a. Uh, call with our public health nurse, uh, Emily Amico, um, late this afternoon. And, um, we just, if you, if you know, if you're not vigilantly watching our Covid nineteen page. Um, you, you may not have noticed, um, that we now only have two, uh, Southborough cases that are in isolation. Um, that we're continuing to watch of the twenty positive cases that we have in town, eighteen of them have been released. Um, from, from isolation. Um, so. In my book, that's great news. Um, and, um, we have not had, uh, any new cases that have been reported. Um, you know, in the last week. Um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's. It's good news for us. I know some of the state numbers have been pretty tough and everything and that, but, um, Southborough is, is doing pretty well in terms of our numbers. So just to reiterate. What some of you have said tonight, I think the social distancing is working. Um, and, and, you know, we're going to try to continue to do whatever we can, you know, to, uh, to maintain that.
Very good. Before I move on, there's nothing that you've forgotten, Mark, that is going to require a special meeting on Friday morning?
So Vanessa's not making any hand signs, so I'm going to say we're okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, all right, so we'll move on to consent agenda. Uh, we've two items, approve open session minutes, April seventh, two thousand twenty. And April tenth, two thousand twenty, and approve Arbor Day proclamation, two thousand twenty. Uh, any items? Members want to hold?
I would move, I would move the, uh, both of them, uh, for discussion if I may.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Klenda.
My only query is on proclamation day. Now, I'm, I love the fact that, uh, I'm, excuse me, Arbor Day proclamation. I love the fact that. Uh, this started in the great state of Nebraska. And so my only question is, it, it's, it's not beautifully Covid related for our, uh, agenda. And we moved on from that. Mr. Chair?
Uh, moved on from Covid related items?
Items.
Uh, that's coming up next, is impact on Covid nineteen, so.
I'm just saying, I thought our agenda was solely to be zeroed in on Covid related items at this point.
Uh. No, I think that we're, I'm trying to get back to as normal as possible.
Okay, that's good news because there's a number of things that I would love to see at our next agenda that are not. Covid related, but things that I think could, that, you know, we could move forward with, so.
Okay.
That's all, that's the only comment I had.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor? Shay, I?
Wendy?
Rashia, I?
Stivers, I?
Heely, I?
All right, uh, next. Update on impact of Covid nineteen. I think we've touched on a lot of those related items already. Anything else that people have?
No.
Nope, all right. Uh, move on to other matters properly before the board. First item, discussion of revisions, revisions to selectmen policy on working remotely during Covid nineteen. Mr. Purple.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, so, uh, as you, uh, assigned me the blame for the Friday morning meeting, um, I'm, uh. I'm all primed up to take the hit, uh, you know, for, for not having in front of you, um, a, a workable draft. Um, for the revisions, um, I had been, um, uh, e- corresponding with, with Mrs. Hale and Mr. Stivers. On a, um, uh, revisions to our existing policy on working remotely during this pandemic. And, um, the intention was for us to try to put some language in the, in our existing policy, which addresses. Standards for return to work. Um, and Mrs. Hale had gone out and to another community. And had gotten some, some good language addressing those things. Again, this is CDC, DPH. Guidelines, it's a little bit of a moving target, but I do think it's something that we should codify. Um, unfortunately, I was not entirely clear, um, which I apologize for to Mr. Stivers afterwards. Because Sam went through and then created, um, two separate distinct policies, which. Created some overlapping, um, you know, and, and really probably would have been a little bit of confusion. And when this is all over, I'm hoping this policy is either, um, rescinded or updated to be something that we could consistently use. And, you know, for flexibility when and if it's needed again, but, um, so, um. I, I believe that, you know, um, Sam and I are now on the same page as to what we're looking to do. There was just no way to get something prepared. For tonight and, and even to put something draft in front of you. Might have been a little bit confusing and, and I, I don't want to make the issue any more confusing, but I would defer to Sam if, if he had any. Um, any thoughts on that?
And Mark, um, um, again, I apologize also. I, I was part of the confusion there, so I didn't fully understand what you were looking for there. So. Actually did draft a separate, uh, um, return to work policy. And I've been working to combine the two, which I'm very close to having done now, so I will get that to Mark shortly. To, uh, Dan, I think it suggested that we send it to Aldo for review, which we can do as well. So. I think we're in good shape in doing that. The, the big question mark for me is that, um. I think this is a very fluid situation. And again, I'm working hard on this for my business as well. And I think the ultimate test here is going to be a serum test for antibodies to Covid nineteen. And there's a lot of uncertainty about, uh, what's available, which tests are accurate and so forth, because. If we actually get to the point of being able to determine fairly clinically, soundly. That an individual is immune effectively to Covid, then that opens the door for going, going back to work, et cetera. Versus the current testing, which is mostly focused on whether somebody has the infection at the point of time of the test or not. It doesn't say that, let's say if they have a negative test, that doesn't mean they're not susceptible to getting the virus the next day kind of thing. So it's not. At least in my view, a perfect test, but it's, it's what we have now. So. The thrust of what I've been working on is, is the document that Vanessa pulled together. That focuses primarily on the existing, uh, virus existence test today versus immunity. And I think that we need to continue to keep an eye on that. And as more clinical science, uh. Is determined relative to how you test for immunity, whether it's from vaccine or from whether having had the, the virus. That to me is the goal standard for return to work and people can be safe themselves and, and their work colleagues can be safe as well. So. Uh, my bias is to leave that out for now because there still seems to me to be a lot of uncertainty about that. Focused on what we can test now, do the best we can with it and move forward quickly to get it in place. So again. My apologies for not understanding completely what Mark was looking for there, but I think we're close to getting it for review for folks.
Now, we, and we continue to, you know, and, and Mrs. Hale can chime in if she would like, but we continue to follow. You know, the, you know, the guidelines from the CDC, the guidance from the public health nurse. Um, and the company, um, that, that we do use in Marlboro for return to work and also for pre-employment physicals and everything. And. Um, again, it is a fluid situation. It does continue to change. Um, this was part of our discussion that we had with, with Emily this afternoon. So I don't know, Vanessa, if you had any comments?
Yeah, I, I would just comment that, um, you know, uh, cases that are reported under the town of Southborough are only for residents. They do not include. Employees, of course, unless they live here, but we're in constant contact. I talk to the nurse every day. You know, just to sort of get her guidance on, uh, situations relative to employees who not be, may not be residents of Southborough. So. You know, Leslie before her, of course, and, and Emily, um, o- over the past week or two. Um, you know, are, are giving us guidance every day and, you know, Mark and I are both, um. In contact as well every day with our surrounding town managers and, and, um. Town administrators figuring out, you know, what's developed in their communities that we might want to look at in our policy here. So. The return to work is, I mean, in the end, employees do not come back to work unless they have a doctor's note if you're out. More than three days, you know, that's the case for every medical situation. You know, these kinds of situations with Covid are, are a lot more complicated right now, figuring out, you know, under what terms does someone come back? You know, what, uh, protective gear do they need to use while they're here? As we look to get all of our employees back in our buildings, you know, that's, that's another complication that we'll have to face, um, hopefully pretty soon. Looking at some sort of reentry stat- reentry strategy. Um, so, um, folks are not compromised, um, before this, you know, illness is, is hopefully eradicated. But. You know, to Sam's point, it's, it's a changing situation every day. So it's hard to codify every single situation in one written policy. So, you know, we, we may find that we need to update it, you know, a little more than we would like to.
And, all right, so we'll look forward to that at the next meeting. Uh, next item, town council recommendation on EDC request for use of special counsel. This is information that was in our packet. Um, just to kick things off, I will move. Uh, we approve, uh, the recommendation for the EDC request for the use of special counsel for the purposes they had outlined. In the correspondence to us.
I'll second the discussion.
Move seconded, uh, any discussion?
Have a comment? Go ahead. Just, I think it's important to clarify that, uh, this is being funded out of the EDC grant. So what I understand we're voting for is to allow for this special counsel to help, uh, develop the, uh. Uh, downtown overlay district or whatever zoning bylaw amendment, uh, is appropriate for that. Again, to be paid for out of the EDC grant funds and not to exceed that payment. I don't think we're, uh. Signing off on anything over that at this point. And I'd also, uh, reinforce that, uh. Uh, I was pleased that we voted, uh, a month or two ago to, um. Uh, be involved in this process and work to get the various stakeholders together. And figure out a way to provide some direction to what, what this downtown process is going to look like. Unfortunately, the Covid situation has put a crimp in our ability to actually meet with people, but I'm hoping that as soon as, as the opportunity exists, we can. Continue to get, uh, the appropriate set of inputs and get the various boards, committees and stakeholders on board with the direction here. And coordinate that with whatever comes out of this, uh, technical support. And make sure that individual has the right direction to be working on something that, uh, that we can support down the road as well as the other participants in the process can. So hopefully we keep that in mind as we go forward.
Yeah, and to your point earlier, Sam, I think this is one instance, it's, it's just very, very important to solicit input and allow input from the public. Into, into this process because it's going to impact so many people and I'm sure so many people will have an opinion on it. So, right? Any other discussion?
Uh, just adding that it sounds like, I believe we have pretty strong support from the Board of Selectmen to. Continue to investigate this initiative. I think it's something that, uh, it could likely be vital to. Our town and to the revitalization of downtown, especially in a, what could very well be a, a, a serious pen- pending. Economic downturn, uh, making Southborough attractive to, uh, new small businesses. New residents in our downtown area, revitalizing that area, I think could be vital to the health, uh, um. And prosperity of our town. So I'm fully.
Yeah, and I just, I, I'll just say that I applaud the EDC. I mean, they, they, um, you know, they went out on their own initiative, got this fifty thousand dollar. Grant and, and they're going to use some portion of it for the, uh, for these legal, um, you know, drafting services.
And I think the rest of it, they're focusing on, um, seeing if there's a septic solution for downtown that would benefit. You know, presumably all of the businesses in the, uh, in the downtown area, new as well as, um, existing. So kudos to them for, uh. For getting this done without costing the town any money.
Okay. And I just actually, um. I have a question and I don't know if it may be a question that Marika can answer. I also, I'm I'm fine with this. I'm just curious why. We're going with special counsel versus a consultant, like when Zach was going on for the town. They used a consultant to help draft the the changes, um, to the zoning. So I'm just curious. Why they they chose special counsel versus a consultant? So I see Marika is here. She would be, maybe has the answer to that.
Are you, I'm here. Hi.
Hi, Marika. How are you?
I'm good. Um, we actually sent out an RFP, uh, to three consultants, um, to work on the technical. Aspect of the zoning amendment. Uh, and then we didn't get any responses from that. Um, and then one of the consultants we actually, uh, approached was Adam Posta. Um, and then when we found out that he's actually special counsel for Southborough. Um, therefore you have to go through this process. So Mark Purple, you advised us to whoever requests. Uh, special counsel.
Hey, Lisa.
Thank you. That answered my question. Thank you. Yes.
I'd comment as as one of the folks who was involved in Zach, I think that was one of the difficulties with Zach is that we didn't have enough. Legal input on that came up with a bylaw that, uh, had some difficulties on the legal side, at least in my view. And so I think having somebody who can actually draft a a bylaw that passes legal muster, not only with town council, but with Attorney General's Office. Is a helpful way to go. And if particularly if that individual has experience with zoning overlay districts, I think that can. Uh, give us a real boost relative to the Zach process. So I'm hopeful that this is the right way to go.
No, I I'm fine. Marika, thank you very much. I appreciate the answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion? Uh, all those in favor? Shay, I.
Wendy.
Rashia, why?
Stivers, I.
Ueli, I.
Excellent. Uh, last item that I had under other matters was discussion of prioritized town meeting warrant articles. And we had touched on this in, um, in other meetings as well. And I guess I just wanted to to. Put it out there. Not that we need to come to any final decisions tonight, but. You know, again, not knowing exactly how. This whole. Uh, COVID situation is going to play out and exactly what type of an environment we're going to have around us when we actually do have town meeting. Whether, you know, we ought to be prepared to have a streamlined or recommend to town meeting. Have our board recommend to town meeting a streamlined. List of warrant articles that we should take action on. Again, think, just anticipating there still being the potential. That. We're in a situation where people may not feel comfortable in, you know, going out in and attending a town meeting. Yet not wanting to miss out on having their input onto a number of articles that. That are on the warrant that would, you know, by their nature, probably warrant a lot of discussion and thus. A lot of time that people would be at the town meeting. And I think that. Again, we've kind of touched on it, but I think I'd just be curious to know if, you know, if the board is supportive of this, not supportive of. You know, coming up with a list of the critical, critical items that we're going to need, you know, like budgets. Uh, other other items to get us, you know, fiscally into FY twenty one. Uh, yet take the time or, you know. Postpone for some time those other articles that may not be as pressing as critical. And, you know, reserve those for a time when people would feel more comfortable going to a regular town meeting like we've all known. And grown accustomed to having a town meeting and giving people the the opportunity to to fully debate them and give them the the time and. Uh, and effort that those warrant articles deserve.
Brian, we would be doing a disservice to the town if we did not do exactly that.
Agreed.
Agreed. Yeah, particularly with a with a special town meeting, um, on the horizon in the fall. Anything that we don't have to do in presumably June or shortly thereafter that we can go over till. October or thereabouts. I mean, I I agree with Dan and Lisa and and your inclination.
I agree also. And, uh, Brian, I looked through the warrant list. And I think it'd be helpful to have some input from Mark and Brian Valentine on what we have to do from a fiscal standpoint. I I was unsure, for example, the CPC articles are things that may generate some conversation. I don't know how critical it would be to not approve those early in the fiscal year versus later. Um, some of them are obvious in terms of some of the bylaw changes, for example, I think are things that. People may want to talk about and are not critical if we don't do them sooner rather than later. But some of the other fiscal things, uh, I'm not, I don't have a perfect understanding of, uh, you know, what we really can defer and what we can't defer. So maybe a starting point is to get some suggestions from Mark and Brian about the. You know, fiscal high priority items or things that can be deferred is a place to start.
So, so one of the things, I'm sorry, Brian, did you want to?
I know. Go ahead, Mark.
So one of the things I think to can, you know, to do this, I'm not sure whether the board wants to do this in a vacuum. Or you'd like to, you know, have this conversation with the moderator. I know that in in the conversations I've had with Mr. Semino prior to all of this. Um, you know, he was taking a look at, you know, obviously utilizing the consent agenda, which was utilized fairly successfully last year. I believe there was about a dozen articles that were put forward. I think ten of the articles were actually voted in one vote. Um, there are some articles that I think are critical to us beginning the year with. Um, that may be taken care of in one vote. Um, uh, Mr. Stivers brought up the CPC articles. While the two project articles may not be something that would be critical to be done. The administrative article, uh, and the articles, uh, pay, um, to authorize the bond payments. Um, for projects already previously approved are things that, you know, that would need to be done. Um, so I I think that if if the articles were identified as critical. There may be a number of articles that could be simply done and put on a consent agenda. Um, and and, um, you know, really would be, could be done in one vote because they're really not controversial.
So, Mark, I I I would actually just like to see any, um. Budget or bonding articles that have to be done. I think knowing, as Marty said, we're we're going into the fall, knowing we're having a town meeting. I think people are going to come to town meeting and not want to sit there. And again, I'm speaking for myself. You know, be in a room where there's still social distancing and everything going on. So I think anything. Short of needing immediate attention, as Sam also said. I I I think should potentially be put off to the fall. And obviously, that's up for the voters to decide at town meeting as well.
Well, exactly. And that's, that's, you know, one of the key points that I know Mr. Semino and I have discussed. And he's obligated to have some sort of action in wa- some way, shape or form on all of the articles that are in the warrant as published currently. Uh, I think that if there was a unanimous. Effort on our board's part, like not only to, yeah, but I think to let people know in advance of town meeting as well. This is the game plan that the board plans to implement. You know, this is an action that we propose to take that. Uh, the, here's a list of articles that we think are priority articles that action should be taken on. We would then. You know, utilizing that consent. Agenda approach or otherwise, say, these are the articles that we would unanimously recommend indefinite postponement of. So that they could be taken up at a fall town meeting. Just so people know that going in and they're not caught by surprise. I think it's going to be a, uh, you know, a communication effort on our board to do that. And I was hoping that our board would be unanimous in that approach. And it sounds like that is the case. And. I'm happy to hear that. But, uh, maybe for. Our next meeting with, um. Uh, with Mr. Semino, we can, you know, maybe work to identify exactly which articles. We would put in that critical category, which ones we would want to take action on. Now, not all the articles are articles that our board sponsors. So I think that there are some articles that other, either boards or others. Have that, you know, that they're the sponsors of. I also think some communication ought to be put up to them as well to encourage them to. You know, be unanimous with us as well and and agree that, you know, their their articles can wait, you know, till the fall, till a better time. So.
Yes.
And I think if people come to the town meeting, knowing that in advance, I think that. Will, you know, be able to conduct a very, very efficient. Tightly run town meeting and just minimize the amount of time that people will be. In a location where, you know, they may not have a hundred percent, you know, degree of comfort still. So.
Agree completely, Brian.
Agreed.
Okay, so for the next meeting, then I will, um, work with Mr. Valentine, put together a list of. Um, those articles that we need to start the year. Do you also want me to identify any articles that. Would appear to be non-controversial? Again, that's just, you know, probably my opinion, but. Um, again, and and Mr. Semino may identify those articles that he feels are non-controversial that may. You know, um, end up on a consent agenda, um, that that could be taken care of in one vote.
Yep. So why don't you put together that first list? And we can go through it at our next meeting as a group.
And again, just generally though, Mark, my view is if it doesn't have to be done in June, we shouldn't do it in June.
I agree completely.
Okay.
You went in doubt, take it out.
Yep.
All right, uh. Good. Happy everybody's in agreement on that. That's up. Um, that's the last I have under other matters. Uh, is there anybody with public comment? Uh, I see there are nine attendees that are listening in. Uh, there are anybody in as attendees that would like to make a comment. Uh, there is a raise hands icon to click. Uh, not seeing any hands raised. I will move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Shay, I.
Wendy.
Rashia, why?
Stivers, I.
Healy, I.
Your adjourn. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Night, folks.